Good evening, welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of the City of Dana Point of this Monday, April 23rd, 2018. Madam Secretary, can we please call the roll?
Please let the record show that Commissioner Donner is absent with an excused absence. The rest of the planning commissioners are present.
Thank you. Matt, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
May I raise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Oh, it looks like it went out of order. We already called the roll. Minutes, approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the minutes with one change, and that is to the adjournment time. I know we are here past 6:30. I'm assuming it was sometime, probably 7:30. But other than that, I'd make a motion that we pass the minutes with that change.
I'll second.
Okay. If we could vote on that? And that item passes with four votes and one absent. Moving on, public comments section. Is there anyone here who... Okay. Anyone wishing to address the Planning Commission during the public comments section or on agenda item is asked to complete a request-to-speak form available at the door. The completed form is to be submitted to the Planning Commission Secretary prior to an individual being heard by the Planning Commission. Any person wishing to address the Planning Commission on a subject other than those scheduled on the agenda is requested to do so at this time. In order to conduct a timely meeting, there will be a three-minute time limit per person and an overall time limit of 15 minutes for the public comments portion of the agenda. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking any action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. I have a request-to-speak form from Frank McAdams.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Commission, my name's Frank McAdams. I'm a...I have been a Dana Point homeowner since 1971. I'm on the adjunct faculty at the Cinematic Arts School at the University of Southern California. And I'm a Vietnam combat veteran. I got my house through a VA loan. This is a FYI, a heads-up on permit number 1-8-0576, which is an ADU permit at 34031 Piquito Drive. That permit is in the plant-check phase right now, as I understand, and went through a review on April 17th. When I moved into my house in 1971, the population of Dana Point was 4,000. This is being covered by the accessory dwelling unit memorandum of December of 2016. The ADU memo of December 2016 is specific in its intent statewide. However, it also states on page eight, "For local governments, they may designate where ADUs are permitted and not permitted." It further states that these areas should be approached primarily on health and safety issues, including water, sewer, traffic flow, and public safety. The aerial photo that has been distributed to the Planning Commission shows Piquito Drive, which is a cul-de-sac street with one-way ingress and egress. This has a neighborhood impact, and it's already being felt. There's a great reaction to it. And we've already had three people, including myself, appear to the city council last week. And I've also been in contact with Assemblyman Bill Bro's office, because this is a...this comes from a statewide purview. These are single-family residences. They've been there since, I believe, since Butler Construction went in there in 1959 and 1960. As I said, it has a great deal of impact. And what we want is the Planning Commission, when this does come up for final review, to carefully look at it in terms of density. There's a fire hydrant, as you can see on the aerial photo, which is at the end of the cul-de-sac circle. So this has a great deal of impact on this street, and we want you to really take a very good look at this, because we're probably going to go back to city council and work through Bill Bro's office also. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McAdams. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak on an item other than what's on the agenda tonight? Okay. Thank you. Are we allowed to discuss what Mr. McAdams brought up without taking any kind of... Or can we ask questions, or no?
No, we really can't discuss the item, since it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
But we could agendize it for a future date if you would like to.
Okay.
Or you can direct staff to look into the issue. Things along those lines, we just can't really discuss it at a deeper level than that.
Okay. I guess I just have one question I don't think is at a deep level, which is, based on the issues that he's raising, is there something that's likely to come before us in the future?
By state law, accessory dwelling units are ministerial action, so there will not be a discretionary permit before you. And I can just add that the city council is aware of this issue and has asked staff to look at it, so we are looking into it.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, consent calendar. There's no items on the consent calendar. Item number two, public hearing. Coastal development permit, CDP 17-0024, and site development permit, SDP 18-004, for an addition and remodel to an existing single-family residence in the residential Beach Road 12, RBR 12 zone, located at 35561 Beach Road. Do we have a staff report?
We do. Mr. Chairman, John Champa will be giving the report tonight.
Great.
Good evening, Planning Commission Chair and Plan Commissioners, John Champa. I'm the case planner for the Benyades residents. The project site is located in the Capo-Sorano Bay District, which is a private community located within the RBRD 12 zoning designation. The site is a existing beachfront lot, improved with a 2,500-square-foot single-family residence and attached two-car garage. Just to give you a little background on this property, it was originally constructed in 1949. It's a one-story, 1,871-square-foot structure with no covered parking. In 1964, a variance was approved to allow covered parking, which would allow for a two-car, 550-square-foot garage up to five feet from the front property line. So that located the new garage, or the garage as it currently exists, in front of the existing structure, and reduced the side yard setbacks from 3 1/2 feet to 3 feet. As a component of the project, a 360-square-foot addition was added on the second story on the C-word side to allow for a new master bedroom and bathroom. The project brought the house to 2,500 square feet and created the 550-square-foot two-car garage. The structure is considered legal non-conforming, because it is located in the FP3 overlay zone and is a slab-on-grade foundation where, for new construction, the structure would be required to be located above the floodplain elevation and place on caissons. So it's not conforming related to that factor, as well as it has side yard setback of 1 1/2 feet or 3 feet is required. Given that the structure is legal non-conforming related to the FP3 overlay, it's limited to a one-time 10% square-foot addition and an annual remodel of 10% of the current value of the structure. The project is requesting a 298-square-foot addition above the garage on the second floor for a new master bed...for a new bedroom and bathroom and a seven-square-foot addition that would allow for stairs to access the new upper level above the garage. The addition modifies the architecture of the building to a new craftsman-style design. This is the existing configuration and images of the property. As you can see, it's typical of a beach cottage bungalow, a beach road area from the 1940s and 50s. This is the proposed site plan, showing the existing structure. The area highlighted in red identifies the location of the second-story addition. And then you can see the two corner... Two corners that are highlighted in red here are the addition for the stairs that were previously mentioned. All of the proposed additions do comply with the required development standards associated with the project. This is the existing first-floor floor plan. And the proposed stairs will be located adjacent to the front entry here. Here is a little bit better view of the second-floor plan, showing the stairs leading up to the new master bedroom and bathroom. As you can see here, all of the proposed dimensions are provided, showing compliance with the required setbacks. This is the new proposed elevation for the first floor, which would show that there are a number of plain breaks and design elements incorporated in the design to meet the city's design guidelines and convey the new craftsman-style design. Project complies with all the requirements associated with the coastal development permit, in that the project complies with the city's local coastal program, including compliance with the city's zoning ordinance. The project has no impacts to public access, as it's located within a private community. And there is public access that exists at its closest point in six... Or .63 miles from the site, at the Poche Beach Access location, as well as about .8 miles from the Doheny Beach Access. Project also requires a site development permit, because it's located in the FP3 and is limited... And because it's legal non-conforming associated with the foundation and construction designs required in that overlay, as previously stated, it's limited to a one-time 10% addition and an annual 10% remodel limitation based on the valuation of the work. Project is proposing a exactly 10% addition at 305 square feet and a 3.2% remodel valuation of 16,825 square feet. The addition is located on the inland side of the structure and complies with all of the associated setbacks. And as previously stated, is architecturally integrated into the new design to provide those visual massing reliefs to comply with the necessary design guidelines. Project conforms to the required findings, given that it is in compliance with the city's local coastal program, as well as complies with all the applicable public recreation policies and access policies associated with the Coastal Act, and complies with all the required findings for the coastal development permit and site development permit. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff is recommending approval of the coastal development permit and site development permit. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions for staff on this item?
I have one.
Commissioner Opal?
The applicant...I mean, the address for the application is 35561. However, when you look at the photo in our package, it has a different address. It's 35557. That's what's actually on the house.
The photo...they might have gotten mixed up. That's the only thing I can think of. The photos should be...the photos that should be in your...
So the picture of their existing...their address that's on the house says 35557. So I'm just wondering what the correct address is for the site.
Yeah, it looks like they put the wrong pictures in the wrong... Because that doesn't look like the picture.
Here, do you want the picture?
So that is for the next application, so they might have...
It's in the wrong place.
Yes. My apologies for that. So the photos represented...
So they're in the wrong spot.
Yeah.
This is the design...this is the existing photos, yes.
Yeah, they just...
Yeah, they might have gotten...
They're backwards. It's okay.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
That was my only question. Thank you.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah. How many bedrooms are in this? And then the other...it's something more curious than anything else. There's a wet bar in the new bedroom. Never seen a wet bar in a... Usually those are for entertaining and stuff, so I'd be curious to know why that's going in. Though, I don't know that we have any control over that.
So there is no control associated with the wet bar in the room. It does not elevate to the level of an additional unit, so there would be no additional trigger associated with any parking associated with that. I believe that this would be a three-bedroom.
Three going to a four, or two?
Three-bedroom going to a four, yes.
Alright, thanks.
Vice Chair Murphy, do you have any questions for staff? Do you have any questions for staff?
Actually, I just had a...well, informational. Based that this house is...I mean, there's not a... The front elevation, obviously, is the back of the house, and the ocean is toward the rear elevation, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Explain to me where the utilities are in terms of water runoff, that kind of thing.
So, as part of the applications, a drainage plan is required. And it requires all the drainage to be brought to the street. So it requires an infiltration system that's located adjacent to the street, basically to allow the water to kind of come in, enter into that area, and then slowly disperse into the ground. And then, you know, any additional water would go to the beach road area, where it would be funneled into another incorporation...infiltration area, and then dispersed and filtered as needed. So all water should be from the structure forward, being brought to the street.
Okay. Thank you.
I have no questions for staff. So we'll open the public hearing. Madam Speaker, do we have any speakers for this item? Madam Secretary? Thank you. Rob Williams?
Good evening, Rob Williams. I'm the architect representing the applicant. I'm just here, in case you guys have any questions. I have no presentation to...just...you got any questions for me? I'm more than happy to answer them.
Wet bar. Any insight on the wet bar?
Say it again?
The wet bar.
What about it?
It's just I haven't seen a wet bar on a set of plans in a long time.
He wants a little area, because what...
Like a man cave type?
Oh, he wishes. No, essentially what it is, when there are people come over, friends and all that, that's essentially going to be a place where they kind of hang out, they make their little coffee and all that, without having to come downstairs. So it's just really going to be a little blow dryer refrigerator, a little coffee maker, essentially that's all it's going to be.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll close the public hearing. Does anybody have any comments on this project? Well, go ahead, Vice Chair.
I was just going to...just to add, this... And I'm getting confused with which project, because of the picture. But it would actually apply to both. The...it appears, from what I'm seeing, that it's about 300-square-foot addition, correct?
Right.
And this is a remodel of the single-family. We all know what the homes look like on Beach Road. I mean, there's just all sizes and shapes and configurations, and so... Having looked at that, it seems to me that it's a good fit. So, and I think my question was answered. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, in my opinion, I think this is a great project. I think that you've done a really nice job with the front facade. It'll really update it and look nice. I find that it's compliant. Yeah, I agree with the findings of the staff report, that it's compliant with the zoning code, and we're not overly, you know, exceeding the allowable additions and remodels. So with that, I'm supportive of the project. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we approve the project, CDP 17-0024 and SDP 18-0004.
I'll second.
Thank you. Great, that item passes. Thank you. Moving on to item number three, coastal development permit, CDP 17-0026, and site development permit, SDP 17-0048, for the addition and remodel of an existing single-family residence in the residential Beach Road 12, RBR 12 zone, located at 35557 Beach Road. Do we have a staff report?
Well, we do. And apologies for the error with the photograph, but just for clarification, for the record, we are addressing project located at 35557 Beach Road. And John Champa will be giving the staff report.
Hello again.
Hey.
So before you is the Langs residence. It's a request for a site development permit and a coastal development permit. The project site is actually located immediately adjacent to the previous property and is located within the RBRD 12 zoning designation, also within the Capo Beach community, Capo Beach Bay community. Project site is existing 3,900-square-foot single-family residence, improved with a 420-square-foot two-car garage. Just to give you a little background on this property, it was originally constructed in 1970. It's a two-story, 2,245-square-foot structure with an attached carport. Back in 1981, a coastal development permit and site development permit was approved by the Coastal Commission for a 1,662-square-foot addition, which included the conversion of the carport to a garage and added 903 square feet to the second floor of the house. The structure is considered legal non-conforming, because it's a slab-on-grade foundation located within the FP3 overlay. It exceeds the height limit for the zone and does not comply with the front, side, or deck setbacks for the lot. Because the structure is legal non-conforming in the FP3, it's limited to a one-time 10% addition and an annual remodel of no more than 10% of the current value of the structure. The proposed project would result in a 163-square-foot addition, which would expand the second-story footprint over the garage, as well as a mezzanine over the second store...story, above the second floor, above where the proposed addition is to be located. The proposed additions would result in a 283-square-foot addition, which would be a 7.2% expansion to the structure. The proposed request also includes a remodel, which includes the conversion of the bedroom on the first floor to a TV area kitchen remodel, repair the existing exterior deck, relocate the elevator, and to incorporate a new laundry area for the first floor. This is the location of the property at 35557 Beach Road. As you can see here, it's a little bit of a craftsman-style design, maybe with a little bit of a Tudor style. Also, very, you know, typical of the styling of architecture along Beach Road from the 1970s era. The proposed addition, as you can see here, is highlighted in red and is located at the front of the lot. It's located on the inland side to comply with the requirements of the FP3 and does comply with all of the applicable setback standards. This is the...on the top, the exist... The top image is the existing floor plan, and on the lower is the proposed floor plan. As you can see here, they're proposing to remodel the kitchen area, as well as convert this first-floor bedroom to a TV room area, along with the new laundry area. And the proposed second-story...second-floor improvements include this addition, which pushes out the second story beyond the garage. However, it does comply with the required 15-foot setback for the second story, as well as remodels the area with a new bathroom area and creates two bedrooms. The mezzanine is located above that area and takes advantage of the very high ceilings that exist with the second story. The reason why it's considered a mezzanine and not a third floor is because it's less than 1/3 of this square footage of the area that it's open to below, and is surrounded by railing. So it does comply with the mezzanine definition and is not considered a third story, which would not be allowed per the zoning designation. This is the existing and the proposed elevations. As you can see, the structural design does improve the architecture of the building, while still incorporated into the existing compatibility elements of it, in that it creates a new roof line. It does comply with the height requirements of the zone, in that it has a 10 and 12 pitch and is 28 feet in height. The proposed project does comply with the requirements of the coastal development permit, in that the project conforms to all the necessary requirements identified in the city's local coastal program, as well as the zoning ordinance. And the project has no impacts to public access, given that it's located within a private community. There's no public access adjacent or within the site. And the nearest public access location is at Poche Beach, which is .63 miles from the site. Project also is required a site development permit, given that it's located within the city's FP3 overlay, and does comply with the requirements of the 10% addition and 10% annual remodel valuation, in that the addition is at 7%, which is 283 square feet. And the remodel valuation is 9.55%, which is $78,403. The addition is located on the inland side, as required per the site development permit requirements in the floodplain overlay, as well as architecturally integrated in the design of the structure, and does not create any massing impacts and complies with the city's design guidelines. Project conforms to all the required findings identified in the city's local coastal program related to public access, public recreation policies, and the coastal development permit and site development permit findings. Staff is recommending approval of the coastal development permit and site development permit. The applicant and staff are available for any questions. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. I'll start out. I have a question. From the mezzanine level, I don't think you can, but I just want to confirm. Can you see...are there windows or like French doors that would allow you to see towards the ocean? Or are those just like closets and storage?
These windows, they look towards the inland?
Towards the bluff, right. But if you were to look the other way, one of the... One of the...on sheet A7, the top right, it looks like there's some doors there. I don't know if those are like windows or French doors, or they're just access doors to like a closet. I'm just curious.
I believe they're...hold on, let me look at the...
Or if the architect knows, seeking out his head. Okay.
Yeah, there...it's just storage located into the attic area.
Okay.
So that...that's what that is.
Thank you. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of quick questions. So, and I don't know if you know the answer to this, this 10% remodel rule. So every year, they gain spend 10% of the value of... This ten percent remodel rule, so every year they gain spend ten percent of the value of, or the value of the improvements they could spend upgrading, but is it cumulative? So if you don't use it, is it twenty next year for your remodel? How does that actually work, and what is the intent behind de-incentivizing someone to take care of their house? That's one. And then the second relates to the one-time ten percent addition. And the question would be, if they're at seven point whatever tonight, are they, can they come back for the next, for the two-point? Or is this it for expansion?
Okay. So to answer your first question, the addition isn't strictly annual. So if they hadn't done anything for five years, they wouldn't be allowed to do fifty percent, strictly limited to ten percent. And that's basically to associate with, given that the structure is non-conforming. So basically, the whole reasoning behind that is establish some kind of limitations that the city not wanting to allow people to make extensive improvements to their property and related to, this is in a high-hazard area, so if there were to have some kind of catastrophic event that would impact their property, so it's kind of a, it's an adaptation measure to deal with these non-conforming structures. And then to answer your second question, it's one-time additions, so you get one opportunity to do it, given that there's a, you know, two point eight or two point three percent allowed, or whatever that number is. The square footage that is used is used at a one-time, and that's it.
Use it or lose it, basically.
Use it or lose it.
That was it. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
I do.
Commissioner Opal?
On table one, the compliance with the RBR twelve development standards, there's a lot of no's there. So kind of questioning that because the lot next door had apparently had some variances that came with the county when they had done some work previously. Is there any reason that this particular parcel doesn't have variances that were carried over? And how do those current no's impact? What are they changing to try and bring it closer, I guess, is what I'm asking?
Yes, so sefted research, there were no variance associated with the project. Given the number of years of existence of the Beach Road community, development standards have changed over time, and that's just reflective of the number of non-conformities that are associated with the community and the structures individually. Also, you know, in the past, it could have been that the property wasn't accurately surveyed, and when construction commenced, you know, it wasn't necessarily in the proper location. We do see that sometimes where the setback is just slightly off. With these projects, we do require survey prior to or with the entitlement, as well as under construction, to ensure that all of the structure is being located in the appropriate areas. Given that the structure is not proposing to demolish more than fifty percent of the structure, which is a threshold established within our non-conforming ordinance, it's not required to be brought up into conformance. However, there is another threshold there, which is the ten percent addition. If the property was going to be proposing more than ten percent, the entire structure would need to be brought in conformance with the FP three standards, which would essentially require an entirely new structure. So there are a lot of measures that are looked at and evaluated to ensure conformance. However, because of the location of the non-conformities, no new, there are no new non-conformities associated with this. So as proposed, the addition complies with the height requirement, setback requirements, front, side, and rear. So the new structure does meet all of the necessary standards.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is the, oh, never mind. Okay. With that, we'll open the public hearing. Adam Secretary. Thank you. The illustrious Rob Williams.
Same comment. I'm here to represent the applicant. You guys have any questions, be more than happy to answer them. If not, I'll go sit down.
Thank you. Thank you for making yourself available. With that, we'll close the public hearing. Does anybody, Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, I would be supportive of the project. It's well-designed. I think it's really great to see these older units, the new light being breathed into them, and really great use of the space with that mezzanine. Haven't seen somebody do that in a long time, so that was impressive. So I'm fully in support of, I mean, it meets, you know, obviously we have some non-conforming issues, but relative to what we're approving tonight, fits within the neighborhood well. It's certainly compatible with the neighborhood, and I agree with staff's findings as well. For that reason, I'll be supporting it tonight.
Thank you. Vice Chair Murphy?
Dino, I support it as well. This project obviously is very appropriate, seems to be very appropriate for Beach Road and especially the hodgepodge of kinds of homes and sizes and types of homes on that street. This would fit in just as well as any of the others that are there. Plans are not overwhelming to Beach Road. It looks like, of course, we've seen many bigger structures on Beach Road. So I think it's a, it's a good project and like to see it go through.
Thank you.
That's an additional thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I too am a supporter of the project. I was, you know, like Commissioner Nelson, thinking, did a nice job with the mezzanine and squeezing the mezzanine in there and staying within the height restrictions is really creative and good work. So it looks like it's going to be a really nice project for our town. So with that, let's, oh, I'll make a motion that we approve, approve CDP seventeen dash zero two six and site development permit, SDP seventeen dash zero four eight for the project at three five 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 seven Beach Road. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Great. And that item passes. Thank you. Old business, there's no old business. New business, sign program permit, SPP seventeen dash zero one for a single-tenant service station located three three five seven one Dela Bispo Street, the mobile gas station. Do we have a staff report?
We do. Nick Zornz will be giving tonight's presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for the introduction. Good evening, Chair and fellow commissioners. Tonight's topic covers the establishment of a signed program for an existing commercial building, the mobile gas station and service station. The subject property is located at the southwest corner of Stone Hill Drive in Dela Bispo Street within the city's community commercial vehicular district. The slide shows the existing elevations of the mobile gas station. The sign program proposes a total of three signs to be placed along Stone Hill Drive and Dela Bispo Street. The proposed sign program will also complete an overall rebranding of the station from Mobile to Circle K. The current rendering represents the proposed signage to be at the corner landscaped island at Stone Hill and Dela Bispo Street. The proposed sign is a freestanding identification sign pursuant to section nine point three seven of the Dana Point zoning code. The proposed plans to utilize the existing structural base and cabinet will be refaced for the sign with a hand-carved wood and then painted the Circle K branding. The existing structural base will be painted a Sherwin-Williams natural ground color to match the additional painting to be completed on-site. The proposed sign is to be externally illuminated by a small floodlight within an existing landscaping area. Signage is encouraged to be externally illuminated from a direct light source per the Dana Point sign guidelines. The direct lighting helps to better integrate the signage with the building's architecture. The current rendering represents the proposed signs to be located along Stone Hill and then along Dela Bispo Street. The proposed signs are the fuel price information signs pursuant to section nine point three seven of the Dana Point zoning code. The proposed signage allows for changeable numeric digits for the fuel prices. The proposed signs are to be fabricated brand-new and relocated to existing landscaped islands that are along both of the major streets. The new structural bases will be painted to match as the other signage with the Sherwin-Williams natural ground, or neutral ground, excuse me. The proposed sign is to also be externally illuminated by a small floodlight for the same justifications of the Dana Point guidelines to meet a direct light source. Fuel pump signage shows the existing and proposed fuel pump rebranding pursuant to section nine point three seven one, one oh five, or one five zero, F four B. Signs encompassed within a fuel pump are required, or required by state law, federal government, shall not be regulated by this code. So this signage is actually not taken account with the overall signage allowed for the site. There are six pumps on-site and no proposed changes to the location or the orientation of the existing pumps. The U-shaped bollards, however, though, that surround each of the pumps will be painted the neutral ground color from Sherwin-Williams to match the other accents throughout the property. The proposed sign program, oops. Excuse me, technical difficulties. The proposed sign program will remove the existing internally illuminated cabinet sign on-site with no proposed additional signage thereafter. Currently, the service station building has blue banding around the facade at the upper part near the roof line. As a part of the proposed sign program, the property will change the banding color painted to match structural bases and U-shaped bollards with the Sherwin-Williams neutral ground color. This is to also alleviate the continuation of mobile branding. Additionally, the fuel pump canopies have blue banding around the facade similar to the building. Again, as a part of the proposed sign program, the property will change the banding color to match the Sherwin-Williams proposed neutral ground. Illumination of all signage on-site shows here on this slide that LED flood lamps to illuminate the proposed identification and fuel price information signage. Five lamps in total are proposed, two lamps for each fuel price sign, and one for the identification sign. In conclusion, staff finds that the proposed sign program would provide a visually attractive and consistent signage theme to the site. Additionally, all signage meets the area limitations of section nine point three seven of the Dana Point zoning code, which allows for one square foot of sign area for each linear foot of building frontage along a public right-of-way. The signage would constitute an enhancement to the overall site. Staff accordingly supports the proposed sign program and recommends approval of SPP seventeen dash zero zero one. Staff is present to respond to any questions of the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions of staff? Commissioner Nelson?
Mr. Chairman, you have a few questions here. And I think I know the answer, but I just want to make sure. These, the fuel number signs, those are plastic, changeable. They're not digital, right, or electronic?
Yes.
Okay. And then the second is, just so I'm clear, because there's stuff on these plans. Are we only looking at the fuel signs and the monument sign tonight?
Yes.
We're not looking at the building and all that, the colors and?
No, unfortunately, there's no other proposed changes. I did want to include, however, the banding because that is the mobile signature blue that they will be removing as a part of that. Previously, the site has proposed other changes to actually continue on with the mobile. That proposal, however, would have constituted a greater increase of overall signage to the site, which they would not have been able to do, given the amount of pumps and the small actual frontage of the actual site. So they actually have now conversely changed to go with the other, I guess, sister company, which would be Circle K.
Okay. So is, I guess, then I'm back to, now I'm confused. So is the, the fuel canopies that are noted on here, those are part of the signage? Is that a branded?
So it will no longer be a part of the signage as it's going to be considered just a neutral color for the overall site. If they had left it blue, that would have been a part of the signage because that's a part of the signature color for the branding purposes of Mobile.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions before we get to mine? Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Oh, thank you. Now I'm confused too. I was looking at everything in total. And so which of the items specifically are we looking at? Are we looking at the mobile sign on the grass and the two signs on either side of that?
Yes, so that's the existing way that the layout is currently today, if you were to drive by the site. So the mobile sign that is existing on the corner will remain in the same exact location. They are going to refabricate a woodcarve sign to be implemented into that existing signage, and then it will be externally illuminated. One of the current fuel price signs is actually non-conforming in regards to the overall size of it. So both of them will be refabricated brand-new. Those will also be relocated to two already existing turf landscaped areas, one that fronts Dela Bispo and one that fronts Stone Hill.
So which are the items that are being repainted?
So it's the bases of actually the, where the signage is going to be mounted to will be painted the neutral ground, and then there is blue banding that exists around the canopies and around the building itself, which that, if they were to have remained a mobile gas station, would have been factored into their overall signage because it's a part of their actual branding logo.
So does this mean that the building itself is not going to be repainted, or is this something for the future?
Not the building itself, but the banding that is a part of the signage will go to a neutral color since the city of Dana Point does not have design review. We wouldn't control a neutral gray or brown like that.
Thank you.
Did, was there any discussion of having the fuel price signs digital, or?
There's been quite a bit of back and forth with this applicant in regards to possible, you know, improvements to the site or signage. I believe it just really comes down to how much it would end up cost to go digital with these signs. There's other signage that are being proposed by the same fabricator. So I know that they have it in their wheelhouse. I do just believe it comes down to the landowner for this particular site that just isn't willing to make that push for that investment.
Okay, thanks. What's, are the garages, you showed us a picture with the two garage doors. Is there any automotive repair work going on at this location, or what's the use of that space now?
There has not been in several years, no. So other than what's beyond that, I do not know. There is obviously the small convenience store, but there is no type of service or repair work that goes on onsite at all.
Okay, thank you. Was there any discussion out of curiosity? It's funny that there's the Pegasus sign on the wall that's a circle. And it seems like a great opportunity to put a K in the middle of it, but I'm just curious if that was ever, ever came up.
It did not upon their resubmission, when they actually totally changed paths from going from Mobile because they were planning on rebranding with just their new improved logos and colors with Mobile. And then in the eleventh hour, they proposed to change to Circle K. They did not propose any new wall signage. The Pegasus cabinet sign that's internally illuminated, because it's also changeable copy, is prohibited per the Dana Point zoning code. So I do believe that they were just kind of staying clear of possibly creating something else that might have been denied before coming to the commission.
I see. Okay. So there's a Circle K right across the street. Is that one going away, or are there going to be two Circle K's right across from each other? Because I got to tell you, my kids are going to be really torn which one to go to. Because I gotta tell you, my kids are going to be really torn which one to go to.
The applicant only informed us is that one is pretty much the service slash gas station, from what they've referred to it as, and then the other, which you're already referring to that exists, is more of a convenience store, it has larger variety and selection for any of its people that are shopping there, so as far as we know, it is staying there. I do know that there's been extreme interest along that entire block for developers and potential builders, but nothing that's ever come before the city.
Okay, thank you, and then lastly, do we know about the timing of this kind of rebranding?
Well, given approval, if that is passed tonight, then they would be able to come in as soon as tomorrow and apply for a building permit in order to be able to pull, generally, sign fabricators do wait, just because of the actual extensive costs that it does entail with fabricating the signs, so they most likely will be in early, as soon as possible.
Okay, great, thank you. This is not a public hearing, so we don't, we just?
It's not a public hearing, but we do have to ask if there's any public comments that are out there.
Okay. Scanning the room, are there any public comments would like to speak, be heard on this issue? Seeing none. Does the commission have any comments or thoughts on this item?
Yeah, this, as most of us know, because we, we all, you know, drive around here, this is a real business, a real busy intersection, and it's an important one, obviously, to, to Dana Point, because, you know, all roads lead through Dela Bispo, through that intersection, and particularly during the summertime, I mean, it's like, that's the, you almost look at that, that intersection as being the gateway into Dana Point, and, of course, when summer comes along, we're going to have a lot of, hopeful, well, I guess we will, have a lot of visitors, and the trolleys will be going through, and we know one trolley stops right there, just past that intersection, so, any, anything that could be done with that intersection would, would be great for the city, so, I still get the feeling this is kind of a hodgepodge. Is it going to be left in a hodgepodge condition, where we still have some things still the same as it shows up in the picture, and other things have moved, or what?
So the applicant, I mean, quite frankly, did as best as they could with what they were given as the provisions from the landowner, the, I do believe that the signage will significantly help address some of the issues that you've kind of named tonight, especially with breaking up the, kind of that entrance of the corner, which really is quite unsightly, I totally agree with you, but especially by them having to relocate those two fuel price signs, which is kind of silly to have two right next to each other, it will help break up the massing for the overall site, I believe, and also help provide some visibility for the cars that are motoring around in that actual small commercial center, because actually, the circulation on-site is not very good, but the overall rebranding, it's, we're pretty much going to get as good as we've gotten right now, especially with them changing the banding, which will help clean up the facade of the building, other than that, they have not talked about wanting to complete any other improvements to the overall site.
Okay, so small steps.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, any other comments? I, I'm supportive of this project, yeah, there's, I agree with you, Vice Chair Murphy, you know, it doesn't look great, but, but, but we're not here to be judges of if it looks great or not, it's, it's, we're here to approve the signage, and is the signage in compliance with the zoning code, or the sign code and all that stuff, so, in that respect, I, I agree that it does, it's compliant, it looks like it's getting improved, so I think, I've never heard of Circle K Gas before, but I guess I'll probably learn to love it. So with that, I'm supportive of the, of the sign permit application, I'd make a motion that we approve sign program permit, SPP 1701, for the single tenant service station located at 33571 Dela Bispo Street. Do we have a second?
I'd second that motion.
Thank you. And that item passes. Thank you. Staff reports, do we have any staff reports?
I just briefly wanted to discuss some calendar management, our second meeting in May is scheduled on Memorial Day, and the city hall is obviously closed that day, we do have a number of development and long-range planning projects in the queue, so from a staff perspective, to the extent we could still hold two meetings in May, it would be helpful, so our thought, if the commission is agreeable, is we'll send out a doodle poll sometime later this week to find out availability of the commission, either later, the last week of May, or if we need to carry over into the first week of June.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
I'm seeing nods, that, that sounds?
That sounds good to me.
Okay, thank you.
That was easy. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Opal?
I just want to say thank you, it's been a year on the commission, and I've enjoyed my time, and it's always a great experience coming here every day, or every two weeks.
I appreciate all of staff's effort and work, and they always do a very professional job, which we appreciate, and they're thorough, they're thoroughly prepared, and so I appreciate that, and, you know, I'm anxious for summer to get here, get some trolley time in.
Well, I echo those same comments, we're getting close to the summer, we're getting close to the fun, fun time, so, I look forward to that, and I thank the staff for everything that they do every day, even though they don't know it, that's what I'm doing, so, thank you.
One year, and you're still coming back, all right, congratulations, it's great to have you on, on this team, or part of this commission, whatever, and, yeah, that's all I've got, so, thank you.
Okay, so with that, we'll adjourn tonight's meeting until the, we have, I assume, an agenda, we have items for the first meeting in May? Okay, so I adjourn the planning commission till then.